All right, it is seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started with our special meeting. I may or may not have an agenda in front of me here. Thank you, sir. All right, first thing on here is mayor's comments, and I don't really have much of anything other than two of them. Don't fall over, Paul. You know if you call me later, I'll just talk all night. Do you have a strategic plan? And I want to introduce Dr. Cotts here in a moment. I did get a phone call from a lady at Ingalls Senior Center, Sharon Reasoner, called me, and they're wanting to add an additional handicap spot in front of the senior center. And that kind of makes a lot of sense to me. I know before we had a parking issue over by Mr. Nixon's house and the post office, and he was wanting, I don't remember if he was wanting to add a spot or remove a spot because of the vision. And I recall the time the board listened and kind of voted what to do, but I don't know if that was something the board necessarily needed to vote on. Debbie, do you recall what our procedure is when it comes to stuff like that?
Um, I believe your chief of police is technically your traffic engineer who designates spots.
Okay.
But obviously, you guys control the chief of police, so...
So I could have my own special place in front of Reginald's building?
Yeah. Until people started lunching.
Fair enough. All right. Does anyone have any problems giving the senior center an extra handicap spot out front?
Well, I think before we do that, you should talk to merchants, retail merchants, if they need a long distance street, if they approach to it.
Okay.
They're the ones that pay for it, pay their taxes, and if it's a hindrance for them, I think they should be involved before they give up a parking place.
Okay.
And I'm not opposed to it, but they should be asked. Christie there, she might make a comment, but she could maybe put in a business and take one more parking space off here. You got Lynn Davis down there, you got the bank. I just think I'd ask them before we do it. I'm opposed, and I think we should have their input before we run something.
Okay, sure. Aside from that, does anyone have any problems otherwise? All right, I'll poll the merchants, and I'll talk to our chief of police. And that's all I have, mayor's comments. I will defer to Dr. Cotts about strategic planning.
All right, thank you for having me here, mayor, city council. My name's Jim Cotts. I'm here from Missouri State. I teach in the Department of Political Science where I teach public administration. And I've got three of my students here in the back row who are in a class with me. And the class is called Service Delivery in Local Government. And these are all master students. And what we're studying is how to deliver services as governments. Now, before I get started, I want to tell you something. I'm not here to sell you anything, okay? What I'm going to talk to you about tonight will be completely free. All we ask is that they do a lot of traveling. If you can feed them a little bit or something, they are students, you know? Macaroni and cheese gets a little... But if you can feed them a little bit, or maybe reimburse your gas mileage or something like that, that'd be great. But even if you can't do that, it's still all free. This would be part of the class, and so let me reassure you there. A little bit about my background. I have been a faculty member at Missouri State University for the past 14 years. I taught for three years prior to that at Mississippi State. I'm a former city administrator from the Chicago area, small town called Lakewood, Illinois, and assistant city administrator for Elmhurst, Illinois, which is a much larger city near Chicago. And I've been doing quite a bit of consulting here in the state of Missouri, doing strategic planning, doing human resources kinds of things. I've probably worked last time, it was over 50 cities, both in Missouri, Mississippi, and Illinois. And so I come to you with that kind of a background. One of the things that we like to do as a university is to share our expertise. And by doing that, fulfill our public affairs mission by helping cities, counties, not-for-profits to grow and do well. And so that's the role I'm adhered with you tonight. I'm not here as a consultant, here as someone who is representing the university. Overview of strategic planning. And this is the thing about strategic planning. Your city will change whether you plan it or not, okay? You can put an imaginary X right here on the floor, and it would represent where you're at today, right? You're going to go somewhere tomorrow. And I'll guarantee you, you'll go a long way in five, 10 years. Now, the question is, are you going to go over here, or are you going to go over here? Okay? And what is that desired outcome? What do you want Buffalo to be? Okay? Because like I said, if you don't plan, something's going to happen. The city will change. But what we're trying to do in strategic planning is make it so our city and our organization changes in ways that we would like it to change, okay? And so I've got a set of handouts here that I emailed to you, and I apologize, two weeks ago I was, had that flu, even though I had the flu shot, I managed to catch the flu. I've got four kids, and college started, and somewhere along the line, it nailed me. But all better now. And I'm going to kind of run through this really quick. I promised, you know, less than 10 minutes, and so I'd rather answer your questions and give you a whole bunch of information. And the first page here talks about what are the key questions that we're doing. But I like to focus on number two, okay? What is our vision for the future? To me, that's the overall key question, which then lends us to, okay, how the heck do we get there? Because we can have a vision of the future. We can decide we want Buffalo's population to be X number of people, 10,000 people. We want everybody to be employed, we want the best schools, we can want all that. Okay, you can want it, and that can be a nice vision, but how do you get there? You know? How do you get there? What are those steps? And so if you turn the page, we talk about the benefits of strategic planning on page number two here. And the top slide talks about thinking strategically and developing effective strategies. In other words, how do we get from point A to point B? Clarify our future direction. In other words, where do we want to go? Establish priorities, because let's face it, we may have a lot of different visions and things that we want to do, but we have to prioritize things, either because of time or money or talent or whatever those constraints are that we have as a city, sometimes we have to make priorities. What's more important? A parking space, which you were talking about today, some playground equipment, a road, a fire truck, a police car? We have to talk about those kinds of priorities. And considering future consequences of today's actions. In other words, what we do today will have a consequence in the future. And I've seen cities that, you know, for instance, I took over a city in the Chicago area, I took over Lakewood, they were running a deficit when I took them over, and they hired employees based on the fact they had a bunch of money sitting in funds. But they were running a yearly deficit. What happens when you run out of money in the fund when you're running a yearly deficit? You've got a problem, right? They had people, they had an employee problem. That's why, you know, one of the reasons they called me in. So what we do is skip down to the bottom here. Strategic planning addresses four major questions. First of all, we have to answer, where are we now? Okay? Where is Buffalo now? And we typically use something called a SWOT analysis to do that. I don't know if you've heard of a SWOT analysis, but what SWOT stands for are what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses, what are the opportunities, and what are the threats to this organization and to the city? In other words, what are our opportunities? What are those threats? And assessing where we're at now. Where do we want to be in the future? That's the second thing that we have to answer. The third thing, how do we get there? In other words, we're going to lay out a roadmap for how the city of Buffalo can get to where it wants to go. And finally, how do we measure our progress, or how do we measure success? Okay, it's one thing to say, well, we want to be better at something. Okay, well, that doesn't take much, right? How much better? In other words, how are we going to measure those successes? What are we going to compare ourselves to? And then the next page starts to go into some of the details, elements of the strategic planning process. You can kind of see the process itself. I promised not to go into a lot of process stuff tonight, because when I make this presentation, and it's about an hour and a half to a large assembled group who's trying to learn about strategic planning, and so I'm not going to go into all that. Hitting some of the highlights that we're going to have to do is that SWOT analysis, setting the strategic direction, and then developing goals, objectives, and performance measures, okay? That's a lot of where the rubber hits the road, you know, those kinds of steps. We talk about the importance of setting strategic direction. And then we go into the next page, we talk about vision. The vision thing. And we talk about vision. It says, "A statement of possible desirable future state of the organization or community." And we have here characteristics of an effective vision statement. It's got to be compelling and satisfying, clearly stated challenges, serve as guideposts, honor the past must be lived, so on and so forth. And we have examples of vision statements. For instance, I'll do the first one, because it's that last slide, because it's nice and short, okay? The city of Fort Lauderdale, the vision statement, "To be the best city of our size in America by 2020 and be recognized as such." That's their vision. Of course, I don't know, have many of you, have you been to Fort Lauderdale? If a city could pull it off, maybe Fort Lauderdale could. I was just down there last fall and talk about a gorgeous area, you know? So having been there, I can say, eh, maybe they could pull that off. You know, most cities can't put something like that in a vision statement. Then we talk about mission. And a mission statement asks who we are, who do we serve, what are the basic principles for which we exist? And to give you, to let you talk about this vision statement, because our mission statement, typically what we'll do is we'll come up with a vision. What's that vision for your community? But the next step will be, okay, what is the mission of this community? And it's kind of a step by step by step. And if you want to picture it, it's like a big funnel. The vision's the big thing, the mission kind of narrows that down. So we talk about a mission statement. An example of this is a police department. What's on the side of most police cars that we see?
Protect and serve.
Protect and serve. That is their mission statement. Protect and serve, or serve and protect. And the beauty of a well-written mission statement is, you ought to be able to wake somebody up in the middle of the night and say, what's the mission? No? Protect and serve. Okay, go back to sleep. You know? It should be almost, no, most of them aren't going to be that short, but most of them will be at least somewhat memorable. Now, Missouri State ours is, I don't remember it anymore, because this was about 10 years ago they came out with it, but it was about a paragraph long. I thought it was a bit too long. But one of those is to produce educated citizens. Okay. Now, that's part of their mission. The next step then is, once we have a mission, is what we want to do is come up with some goals. Now, this is where we start to see concrete stuff come out of this, right? Got the vision, got the mission. We know what we want to look like, we know what our business is in, now how are we going to accomplish it? And goals, they have examples of goal statements here. Goals should be in harmony with your vision and mission and value statements. Goals should reflect your strategic issues and priorities, so on and so forth. And some examples of goal statements, "To create a clean, healthy, and attractive environment minimizing pollution, litter, and physical deterioration while instilling community pride." That's an example of a goal statement. Okay? So one of your goals for Buffalo could be, could read something like this, "Or had to have the best overall educational systems in the United States, one that offers high-quality educational opportunities to citizens of all ages." Okay? Those come from Meridian, Mississippi. Now, originally, when they first did a plan, they talked about having a high school graduation rate of a certain percentage. But here we go down to objectives. So now the question is, how does Meridian accomplish this? Okay? Remember, we're going down this funnel. And objectives are considered to be interim steps, interim steps you take to accomplish your goal. So if you turn your page to page six, Meridian, Mississippi, and if you look at the second slide, remember we talked about that goal of having one of the best educational systems? Okay? That center slide talks about how they're going to do it. "To reduce the illiteracy rate to 10% or less by the year 2020. To have a high school graduation rate in excess of 75% by the year 2020. To work toward a single public school system by 2015." Okay? See, what the beauty of those objectives is that now you've got something measurable, right? You had your vision, your mission, your goal is to have that public school system. Now, how do we get there? And this is where you start to have a roadmap. Okay, how do we get there? And for Meridian, it was those three things, toward having one of the best public school systems. Okay? You all following me so far, as far as how this is working? Kind of on down the ladder here. And then you talk about performance measures. You see that bottom slide, relationship between vision, goals, and objectives and performance measures? Because the next step is after those objectives is you have to develop an action plan. Okay? And we'll talk about that in a little bit. But here you have the state of Utah, the vision, goal, objective, performance measure. Let's see here. And then strategy. Next page, page eight. Which is, "Specific course of action, a group of activities that will be undertaken to accomplish the established goals and objectives." And so what we want to do is, for instance, let's say that one of your goals here in Buffalo would be to have adequate parking in the downtown square area at all times of the day. Do you have that already? Well, let's say you didn't, okay? And so that becomes your goal, right? That you want adequate parking. Then what would be your objective? Would be potentially to develop a plan, first of all, to have adequate parking. And then what would be your strategy? Okay. The first step would be to hire a consultant or whatever, or maybe you do it in-house, identify the appropriate people to do the study. The next step would be to develop the plan, that kind of a thing. And what we try to do is put a timeline on it, too.
Sorry, I thought I turned that off.
That's a cool ringtone.
I have to turn three tones off, so I missed one, sorry.
But anyway, what we're trying to do is, what we're trying to do is come up with a plan for the city. In other words, well, you'll have a vision, you'll have a mission, you'll have a set of goals, and you'll have objectives, and you'll have a plan of how to accomplish it. And what you'll get is a document that will have all that in. Well, we can do this a number of ways. I suggest you do this by getting citizen input, okay? In other words, it's not just something the city council will have to do. One of the things that I would do is lead focus groups of your citizens, so we don't have the cost of doing a survey. We can bring groups of people in, and I can talk to them about what they see for the future of Buffalo. And what we would be doing is taking notes and preparing a report for the board to take a look at that. And at some point then, the board would sit down, and we would work on those visions for the city of Buffalo. After that, after we've got that, then we work on mission statements. Typically, I will be gathering that information from your focus groups as we go along, so you have that information from your citizens. And of course, you have that input then to put that all together. And that's kind of the process that we use. And I don't sit in my office and develop these things. What I do is I work with your city staff, I work with the city council. Particularly, you know, typically we'll have one or two point people, like the mayor, to call, somebody in city hall to call. I know Christie was interested in this originally, so maybe, or one of you others who might be very interested. But everybody here gets equal input. And that's the key. All board members get equal input. All citizens get to be heard if they want to be heard. My job is to be impartial and be in the middle. It's my job to collect the information and bring it to you, and then it's also partially my job to make sure that this board, everybody has equal input. So anyway, before I talk way too long, which I probably already have, let me ask you if there are any questions.
What's the timeframe for start of the decision?
The timeframe, if we were to start now, the timeframe would probably be, we could probably get it finished by early May, late April to early May. And that's, of course, assuming plenty of cooperation from the staff, the ability to get, you know, a couple of focus groups together here pretty quick. But I've got, you know, I've got more help than I would typically have on something like this. What we would do, if you said yes, is what we would do is we begin collecting your demographic data, doing some comparisons to other neighboring cities kinds of things, lots, you know, some census work, that kind of thing, that we begin, that you don't have to supply, but it's stuff that the students would start by doing some research on. And basically preparing the first part of your report. And in other words, that's part of that snapshot, where are you? You know, how many people work here? How many people live here? What's the median age? What's the median income level? What's, you know, all that statistics we would start to put together for you. And so that's a big help, to have the kind of help that I have sitting back there.
All right. Well, I'd take a couple of minutes and explain to the board why this is vitally important. It was about six months ago, in one of our meetings, I asked Debbie to work on a comprehensive plan for us, to kind of get things together and move it forward. And the reason for that is because we've done a lot to help ourselves of late. Most recently, we passed a half cent sales tax for capital improvement. We've embarked on doing in-house a road project that's going to run approximately $550,000. We've recently gotten a $300,000 grant for a green space trail. We very much so want to start doing things for ourselves. Along with that, we have needs. We need to update some of our water. We need to work on our sanitary sewer system. So there's a lot going on. But the good news is, we have the resources to do it. And I've said many times, we have the big cities like Springfield, where the mayor has a staff of 25 people or so. They have a city manager that makes, I mean, how much is their city manager?
Last time I heard, well, when they hired Greg, he was making, what was it, $198 in salary plus benefits? I think he's up closer to $230, $240. And plus, he has two former city managers. Well, he has General Marty working for him, who used to, what, a two-star general? And he was a chancellor out at one of the big colleges. And then they had, he has Colin Quigley working for him, former city manager of Ozark. That's a nice staff.
Yeah. And you compare smaller communities of 300, you know, they don't have any resources. Their big challenge is to make sure people's cows don't get out on the road at night. Here in Buffalo, we have other challenges. We have resources, we have ambition, but we don't have the $200,000 a year city manager. We don't have a city engineer on staff. We don't have a Department of City planning. So this is where your services will help us focus. At our last town hall meeting, I announced, hopefully at the beginning of this year, we would have some Board of Aldermen meetings dedicated solely to figuring out what to do with the half-cent sales tax. And at that same town hall meeting, I had five or six projects I presented to the community as a whole, and gave them kind of a preference ballot. What do they like? What do they want to see happen in Buffalo? So we do have...
We've already got some information.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
We've got some data and feedback. I've done, I've had three town hall meetings since becoming mayor. The two of them, I like to think were successful, and I forget what happened at that other. We did get a lot of input from our citizens.
It's good to have a short memory.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. So we're at a crossroads. We're at a point where we need to figure out where to go from here. We've got a lot of good intentions, we've got a lot of good ladies, lady and men up here who are ready to, you know, start our future. And I certainly believe that perhaps you're the key to that.
And I, you know, one of the things about the process, too, and that's why going into a lot of details about process, I thought would be probably a waste of time, because one of the things I want to do is sit down and work out exactly what fits with Buffalo. And, you know, what kind of process do you want to engage in? And we would customize that for you in the next couple of weeks. We'd get right on that, and then we move forward.
Okay.
And it sounds like you've already got some good stuff. And I know that one of the problems is, is sometimes you feel like you're putting on fire so much of the time when you're a city. You know, this problem crops up here, okay, we've got to fix that, rather than looking forward and saying, okay, what do we do before that kind of thing happens? And that's what we can help you with.
Okay. I guess my question to the board, do you all have any questions? And what I would propose we would do, and this is my proposal, I'm sure Alderman Horn is on board, that we engage with Missouri State to undertake this. And I would ask that our next meeting, we address some sort of budget, and it doesn't have to be a huge budget, but a little bit of money that would at least fund some meals and maybe some mileage.
That would be excellent for the students. If you wouldn't mind doing that, that would be excellent.
I have a question. As far as if we were to have to pay for consulting to do this type of thing, what would that cost us?
I normally charge $750 a day. So in the end, it would just depend on the process. I couldn't give you an exact number. Probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $15,000. Depends what kind of stuff you wanted to do. If you wanted a survey, that would get more expensive, those types of things. One of the things I learned as a consultant, you know, when you're bidding on projects, you never give a ballpark. But it seems like you're not, I'm not really bidding a project, I will tell you, that's the ballpark.
I would, I mean, do I need to make a motion to prove that we...
I don't think it's necessary, but if you want to make a motion, we'll entertain it for, so that everyone...
Okay. I'll make a motion that we work together with Professor Cotts and his team and make a strategic plan.
Is there a say?
I'll say.
I'll call for a roll of the votes.
Wayne?
No.
James?
Aye.
Jim?
No.
Christie?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Larry?
Yo.
Okay, that's three, three.
Well, I will cast the tiebreaker vote and say, yes, sir, please help us. And I appreciate that.
I appreciate your time. And I will be in touch with, should I contact Debbie or you?
You can contact me or Debbie. And let me get you my card. I found them yesterday. I have them.
And I left from home, so my cards are at my office at the university.
That's it, my cell phone, because that's where you get ahold of me.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, board.
All right. Moving on, I want to jump backwards real quick. Mayor's comments, there was something on here I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. I got a call from Kevin Sharp this morning. Thank you, dude.
Thanks.
A call from Kevin Sharp this morning. There has been an appraisal of the county's street shed at Mill and Hickory. The property had been appraised for $40,000, and they are offering it to us at that price at this time. They're going to keep that offer open for 30 days. After March 1st, the property will be offered to the public for bid. Kevin tells me that their starting bid would be at $40,000. This is the opportunity we've long been waiting for. And this might be a question for Travis. Real estate and that sort of thing, is that one of the... Real estate and that sort of thing, is that one of the topics that a closed meeting would cover?
You may close it for discussions about real estate and that.
Okay. And that might be something the Board would want to discuss. I don't have a preference either way. Obviously, we could do that today, depends if it would make the agenda for a closed meeting. But I think I have no preference, by the way. How about the funds that come out of transportation? Was that right?
I don't know what it's worth, I know what anything's worth. You have good property, it's worth nothing. But compared to what they did for a nice piece of property, this is overpriced. Comparison, comparison. You make a lot more for that $125,000 than they're asking us for $40,000. You've got to remember that's a flood plain piece of property. And watch there, is all that can be built on it and helps buildings flood when that water comes up.
Hasn't clearly got half of what the race actually planned last year, did it?
I think that's a good idea. Get a half, we'll get, we'll give them $20,000 in margin. This is my opinion, we discuss it when it's an appraisal, it's one person's opinion of what something's worth. I'm sure not an appraiser, more than I do if I had a use for it. I mean, we've got to make sure that if we purchase this as a city, is it something we're going to use? Besides just stock block on top. So I think we'll think about it for 30 days, our next council meeting.
Yeah, I don't know.
Come up, go down and look at it. I mean, I'm not sure that Christie's ever saw it or has ever drove into gate and looked at the building, she may have.
I'm not betting her drove by it.
Yeah, we've all drove by, but we need to look and see if it's something we can utilize. We need to have Roger's opinion, is it something that the city street department can actually utilize all the time? Just to sit there and accumulate trash. We don't need anything else to clean up, is my opinion. I think we all look at this.
How much time are we saving on ice material if we can buy it?
No, no, I think those are items, yeah. Yeah, I think those are things that we need to ask Roger before we're talking about. We've got white rock piled down behind the police department because we haven't got a place to put it. You know, still $40,000 to store something. Unless we can utilize the buildings, the salt sheds, we better own the salt sheds, we better own. I think we'll just kind of counsel, look at it and have Roger give us his opinion. This was just laid here tonight, it's only less than 10 hours of what they want for it. We've got plenty of time if we, you know, we've got a full month. We've got several more meetings to attend before we have to make this decision.
And another thought is, a good person to ask will be Roger. I know recently, I'm not saying Roger's messy, but he accumulates parts and materials and equipment. And he erected a store at the airport. And recently, the FAA came in and said, hey, you guys need to tidy up down there. And Roger spent a little bit of time tidying up. And I would like to think if we had a little extra space somewhere, then that, that job would come a little more natural, it'd be easier.
It's not that we probably could use the space, it's worth the value.
Oh, certainly, certainly.
It's a dollar, it comes back to the dollar amount.
Certainly.
Now, we're, we're still trying to figure out what the last major project cost us and we won't know until it's finished. And when it's finished, we'll know where we're going to do, where we're going to go from there. And hoping that the transportation on Locust Street will be wrapped up sometime within the next two or three weeks, prior to the time we have to make this decision. And know exactly at that time what Locust Street cost us before we start anything else. I mean, we're, it's, we don't know what it's going to cost. We're guessing, we're, you know, and I'm not arguing we shouldn't build more sidewalks. This was a major project for us to take on. Before we take on another one, we really need to see what this one actually cost us. Could we have spent some money more wisely? Could we have saved some money? We don't know. And until we look at the final bill and look at the street and all, I'm arguing about the street, the street's a great deal. The next one we'll bill will probably be great too. But I just think we ought to really look at our funding and that's my opinion. And that's on this building down here, I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm saying we should use a little common sense and look about it to see if it's something worth developing, paper, transportation, that's part of it. But the two things that we've got to bank after, I think. Roger got a call, the mowers ready. They're going down, look at it, see if it suits what we want. It's 12.5.
14.5, is it?
Was it 14, I couldn't remember.
I believe it's 14.5.
The, the Board approved up to 13,000.
Was that what it was? I thought it was 12.5 and we were going to give-
I made me wrong, I thought it was 14.5.
Yeah, I thought it was 12.5 too.
I know. We've got to look at that because we know we need that piece of equipment to get through for the year and do the budget. So we know that that's got to come out of transportation. This will, I think we're, and this can break down. We just all need to look back and see if it's feasible and it's Roger's show. We can use it, I'm sure we, we can always use vacant land, we can always use buildings. And maybe get to the point where we can do some road repairs if that happens to come, that building's big enough to run some things. So that's my opinion on Dallas County's proposal to us, till it's as time as we have time to look at it.
Any other input for-
I agree with you.
All right. Debbie, if you'll put that on our next agenda for us to review at that time. Thank you. Is there preference for-
Well, you already said what price it would be, so I don't know if the point would be closed. Isn't that why we do closed meetings for real estate, so?
Well, arguably, since they put forth an offer, you all could make a counter offer.
We can make a counter offer. My, I mean, it's, let's look to see if we even want to make a counter offer. It may be a situation we throw our hands up and say, you know, we appreciate the opportunity, but we, it's not feasible. And we may decide that it's, it has value to us and we'll go into our closed meeting at that time, discuss the real estate, give it pros and cons and come up with a bid on the situation. But I think it's something that we have to look at ourselves and see if it's, well, I think we can't make that decision.
You just have to remember that the fact that the opening bid may start at $40,000 doesn't mean that you're going to get a $40,000 bid.
Now, if I sit there 90 days-
In which case-
Set for 30.
In which case the county might want to reevaluate.
Well, they may take less for it. You're saying that-
And, and this might, and this might be a better topic for a closed meeting if we're going to talk about what our buying strategy is. Not tip our hand.
That was why I asked the question.
It'll get, it'll give us time to-
That was the only reason I asked.
So now I tip our hand.
I want to go look at it, I mean, Jim wants to look at it. Jim wants to look at the building. Christie hasn't seen it. We need to look inside the building to see if it's what it is. We also know that one of these days, we're going to have to cross that grain. Knows the other things, we've got to look at the long term for our Greenway. You know, on the other hand, if somebody built it and hired, and hired 50 people, I'm well, let them have the building until 50 people work. We just need to look at it. Take what I, not in, I'm with the motion we just laid back for.
Yeah, let's put it on the, the next meeting for, for closed and the Board will vote at that time whether to discuss it in open or closed meeting, okay? Transportation Enhancement Program, and that's our grant. Did we get bids on that? Or-
Bids on that?
Requests for proposals?
No, I have that ready. The Board needs to approve that project so that we can continue, I mean, to, for us to take bids for that.
That's right. Okay. Yeah, the, the Board would need to approve $375,000 from the transportation fund to fund the program so we can, I guess, get started. Is, is that correct, Debbie?
Yeah, I mean, the grant is for $300,000 from MoDOT, but it is a reimbursement program. And the total project cost was estimated to be $375,000.
Okay. And there's something else. What else can I bring up? Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot.
Okay.
I'm not against any of this, but I would really personally like to talk to the engineer and really see the plan laid out. We're waiting to sign a batch record, we have $35,000, $375,000 for our money, $350,000. You know, it's, it's our cash. And is it really what we want? Is it really going what we want it to do? I think that we've talked to King, but I don't think, I have not seen an actual plan of what they intend to do. Has anybody else, Christie, you? I mean, I'd like to see what they're asking us to open the bids for, because if we don't open the bids, we've got to pay it. And I just kind of like to look at it. I just want to see, before I would vote for it, I want to see what's going to do, see what's up. Because last week we was here, I didn't, I had in my mind, I guess I live in vision grandeur, I thought this thing was going to be two lanes wide and, you know, 20 foot wide down through there and I could see this bicycle pass and all of a sudden, I hear, well, it's four foot wide. Now, I mean, that's, and I would really, I'd really have against it, but I'd really like to know what we're doing before we, before we vote to pass it. I don't think anybody on the council here is against doing it. I think we just need to look at it to make sure that we're not on the outside. It doesn't turn into something that we wouldn't have done without that.
And I think what King had mentioned in the past was something around a 25-foot easement with, with an asphalt. And I think he said there's a percentage, a high percentage, 80%, that we could do asphalt. The other 20% would be gravel.
See what they're going to do on Hickory Street.
And the-
Where it crosses, where we've got that major problem now.
And the, the trail would be eight foot wide. But, but before we get to that, we have to put out a request for proposals from engineers. That, that's step one, is that right, Debbie?
Yeah, I mean, technically, you haven't hired King at this point to be the engineer on this project. Because there is federal grant money involved, you have to put out a request for proposals through MoDOT, using MoDOT's specifications in order to allow any engineer firm that's interested a chance to be picked for the project.
If we make that, if we make the commitment to hiring to take bids on engineers, is that a commitment? We're going to do this job without looking at it?
No.
I mean, can we see the grant application? Is there information in there describing what they're wanting?
I mean, I have, I have a copy of that and it pretty much, I had read through it. This phase was for 4,200 feet of trails from Main Street to the Sea Park North Edge. And I believe it's another part that says where it's paved. The trail's 12 foot, 12 foot wide with a one-inch aggregate shoulders. And it'll be paved from Main Street to north of Mill Street. And the rest will not be paved at this point. Is what that money will get you.
That's going to the, that's going to where all the water problems are. Just like the Mill, I mean, from Mill Street there for two blocks is where the major water problems are. I mean, it's got to be handled where it doesn't flood all the time.
Main, Main and Mill, what, 2,000, 2,000 feet's all it is.
From Mill, from Main to- Mill's 2,000, we've got another 2,000. We don't know if we've got easements for it. I mean, I know with all this, it's got to be done. Engineers has got to be hired and commitments has got to be made. And I think it would probably be a great deal for us, but I think that we don't need, we need to know it's going to be completed before we make a real commit. I mean, we know it can commit, we assume from Mill to Main Street, we assume we have easements.
Well, and I, I think procedurally, what, what the Board would need to do would be to vote to allocate money to fund the project. It doesn't mean the money's going to get spent. Then we put out requests for proposals and then we more or less interview the engineers, figure out which one is likely to get us where we're going and look at the projects and then go from there.
I don't think we're obligated if we ask for a proposal.
That's what I want. I want to, I want to know we're not requesting a proposal, that we're not obligated.
No, I mean, as I understand, yeah, as I understand it, all that you all are doing now is picking somebody to say, here are my qualifications to work with the city to put together a plan.
So if we don't like them or if we don't-
You can reject them all.
Here's their vision.
Yeah.
Their vision.
And, you know, I mean, there's-
Still comes back on my, I want to see about my visions.
That's my understanding, and I haven't looked at the MoDOT regulations, but I assume that they are consistent with the state engineer and professional selection criteria that every municipal-
For us to do this, for us to lay out, doesn't this, don't we have to provide them with something to bid? The work? I mean, is there a set of plans around here?
I think that's the next-
No, this is, this is to, for them to develop the plans.
They're to develop the plan after-
After you've selected an engineer to do the project.
So we're not out any money or any obligations until we look at their plan and if we're capable.
You won't, you won't get a plan. You'll get engineers that will say, I'm going to do the project for you and here's my qualifications. They're not going to bring you a plan for the project. That was what you wrote the grant on, is based on the project for that Greenway section.
But you know, I think James' argument is a really good point, but that's nowhere near 4,200 feet. And if the grant is for 4,200 feet and we go from Main to Mill Street-
Well, that, that was just the paved portion.
4,200 was Main to the edge of the park. It's only going to be paved from Main to Mill, or not quite to Mill. So it's only going to be paved for a section of it.
I thought it's going to be paved for more than that, but I guess not.
I had read through it because I honestly didn't know until I read through it.
I thought it was like 80%.
Well, I think if we got it sorted somewhere, we can always, as long as we're not out of any money, until we decide what we're going to do.
I mean, at this point, you guys kind of need to decide if you want to take the grant or not for us to go ahead and put out an R and D for engineering.
Do you feel like you want to spend $75,000?
Yeah, that's my question.
That's bottom line, if you want to spend $75,000.
We don't really, yes. We won't know until we see what their proposal is and look at it. Then we can make an intelligent decision as to whether or not this is something we want to proceed.
We can do this, we can decide after we get the engineers, even if we want to spend $75,000 at that time.
Yeah, I, I think this, the two-step process is, number one, you have to pick an engineer to work on the project. Then the city's going to have to decide whether they select an engineer and pay them to put together a plan for what the project's going to look like. And that, that part is going to require a commitment of money for the engineer to do that. And then, if you decide to move forward with that plan, then you're going to have contracts with all of the subcontractors to do the various pieces of work. So those are the three phases, the three main phases, I think, that this is going to warrant. Debbie, is that fair?
Yes.
Did we, did we, did King, I, I thought sometime or another I saw a plot of what it would look like. Have you seen one?
I, I just got, excuse me.
Was there one laying out here for a while?
Yeah, I didn't map, but that's all it was.
Highlighted Greenway map that-
Yes, I was.
There was.
I think it was the waterways.
Something, you get that done?
No.
But it really didn't show it. Point of $15,000, all it showed was-
For some reason, what, what did we, what did we get King told for $10,000 for?
That, that was a feasibility study.
We did things for that.
Yeah.
For this.
And it was 70, 7200 dollars is what we paid King. Look at the waterway and give us, I guess, a feasibility of what to do with it.
But we have, we have spent some money so far to this point in regards to it. 7,200 plus-
600.
600 to, to get the grant.
And 500.
So we've got $8,000 tied up in it. Now, is that right?
Well, 7, 700.
But wait, and don't face, so, we're going to take, basically, we're going to take what King draw as an engineer. And then we're going, because the grant is written off of his sketches.
No. No, no, there, there are no sketches per se.
I think he just showed on that map the route that we're going to take.
This, I think Debbie's, I think she's digging for something, and I think she's digging for it, I think I, I saw this one time.
Christie, do you have that book with you?
I don't.
There's a picture of a, of a trail in that, maybe that's what it's about.
See if I can do anything else.
I didn't show you the other square.
Here's the square, it comes from Main to... Here's the fault. Here's the city, here's the school, so it starts from Main Street here, forty dollars to...
Thousand hundred thousand for it?
And this forty-two hundred, this, this grant we asked for...
We got your little picture of what...
Does it go through the city?
There's a picture on that.
Two, I believe.
There's what they're proposing? No, it gives you an idea of what...
Eighty-nine dollars a foot?
My understanding is the team did, and I'm guessing here, just from my understanding of engineers feasibility studies, they would have done calculations of water flow through that part of the city to find out what sort of problems they had, you had as drainage. I'm assuming they did a water, you know, gallons per minute calculation and, and whatnot. I don't know that, I haven't seen it, I'm not claiming to have seen it, but that's what I assumed they would have been doing for part of that seventy-two hundred dollars.
First of all, that bridge down there, the way it's built, will not handle more water coming through, that's the way it is now.
I've seen the water over Main Street down there at the bridge, four foot over that road. That's kind of what's being built, by the way.
Down by the park?
That's the point of the project, though, is to enhance that waterway so we don't get water up on the road.
Well, when you find that out, there will be more down there. There's more rock road down there.
Over Main Street.
Where would this money come from?
Transportation. And it could come from the, the capital group.
When King sure you have pictures of other projects similar to this that have been completed, and he could come in next meeting and show us, give us some indication of what it might look like, either from other projects, and, and give us some of his data that we pray to him. He'd do it all for, and talk to us about it.
There's only one part of it that really concerns me. The whole thing is high. I want, I think that on Mill Street and Hickory, especially on Hickory where that overflow is, you're opening a Pandora's box. I mean, I just, that thing has been the same thing for a hundred years, and it's flooded, and it's blocked, and how are you going to be able to utilize a walking path when it rains?
What should I?
No, the, the key is you enhance the waterway so it doesn't wash your legs.
That's what I'm asking for, is to show me how you're going to enhance that to handle water.
And that's what the engineer does.
We need to ask King, no, that's right. And we need to see if he could come.
You've got to get the water under the bridge on Hickory, to do it.
They're going to have a mighty big, big bridge, I'll tell you, it's yours.
It's not that big, right? It's not that bridge, it's an eight-inch whistle. Two eight-inch whistles. Long version of the time, I did, I, I just think we ought to look at it. You know, and, and if we give King seven thousand dollars for a feasibility study, tell us what his feasibility study has arrived at. You know, and then make this decision to lay this out and tell it that we're wanting to... Yeah, but I, that's major, that's, that's a lot of concrete, that's a lot to handle, that much water. Coming all the way from MFA through Oak Road Two, and all of that water comes from Oak Road Two right down through there. And that's a lot of water at times.
You have to go over it no matter what you do, when you get a flood down there.
Comes from Wayne's house, plenty of water.
If we don't buy, if we don't buy that building from the county, we'll run all that water over there.
I'm all for that, but you know, I've seen that man who covered three foot in the air.
I have too, I used to live down there, floating off.
It just blows up because it's got all that water pressure coming back. So I, I just would like, I just like, yeah, I might see what he's going to do, and I'm not arguing with him, but, you know, I don't want to start it and then it not do what we think it's going to do, that'd be the worst thing that could happen.
I hope this, I mean, another project like Locust Street, another hundred fifty thousand more.
Well, it's just hundred fifty thousand, what are you hearing here, young life?
And let me put it, Larry, let me put it in perspective for you. Locust Street could be X amount more, it was a good project.
If it lasts.
Twelve years ago, they wanted one point one million.
That's to tear it all out.
I, I know that, but there was no added benefit to tearing it all out. We're, we're getting a good deal, despite the fact that we're...
I think you'll see in about a year what happens.
Okay, and, and...
Well, I didn't... It's done, done, it hasn't happened.
But, but my, my point is, Larry, we don't have a, a five million dollar pool that we can't afford to operate. We're not trying to build a five million dollar pool that we can't afford to operate.
Okay.
We're, we're doing something basic and simple, that's going to be a added benefit to our community.
I think we're going to have a problem down there at the end of that Chief's house, that curb there. Someone's going to fall off that and break a leg, if we don't put some rails or something there, too.
Well, we, we might have to do this.
I know you have it.
Let's move on down here.
No. Okay, less than here, on the eleven. All right, uh, next thing we have is the mileage reimbursement rate.
I'm going to open it up by saying that I think that IRS rate of fifty-two or whatever it is is too high. I don't know what the correct rate would be, but to start it out and it can't be amended, I'll make the motion that that be reduced to thirty cents a mile.
I'm just curious.
I'll send it back. Was it thirty-two or thirty cents, I'm sorry?
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty, just, just for a matter of discussion, do we have much of this?
We may not, but if we have any, you need to have a policy.
Oh, okay, we don't have a policy question.
Oh, we do, but it's fifty-two.
Oh, you're admitting the policy to thirty cents?
Yeah, well, I'm not doing it, I'm, I'm making a motion.
Well, that's all I'm asking, if it was a fifty cent.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, I'll open it up for discussion and/or confusion. Is there any discussion? I'll call for a roll of the vote.
James.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Christie. Aye.
And, and just to clarify, we've already voted, and our, our city attorney brings out a, a, a pretty good point. Is this just for city employees, or was your motion to include it? Anyone prevailing mileage to private contractors or otherwise?
Well, I think...
I think so. Because, because there might be a prevailing wage issue if, if, if we're hiring out, or if we're reimbursing a company that's reimbursed, I, I...
I don't think it's prevailing wage.
Not prevailing wage issue, it's a, it's just a contractual, like, I mean, I don't know who...
Well, if we sign a contract, that's an overriding thing.
Okay, I, I just figured that'd be a question that would come up in the future, and I wanted clarity. Okay. All right, building code opt-out. I'm making a motion to leave it like it is.
That's a second motion.
You don't want to leave it like it is? It's expired, we don't have it like it was.
Like it was, reinstated?
Reinstate it. Okay, we have a motion to reinstate the opt-out provision.
A second.
In a second, okay, I'll open the floor for discussion.
Can I, can I ask a point of order, are you talking permanently at this point?
Does that mean opt-outs out?
They're going to opt out.
We can still opt out.
Opt-out in. Forever, no sunset.
We can always revise the building code later down behind the floor, but let's, we argue about it. Change the town, let's try to get something done.
Okay, any more discussion? I have a question, just, do we know how many folks opted out during the time that it was in place?
Two, two.
Two, I believe it was, I did, I did go in two, just before, I met with...
It was two people I've left.
And if those houses since burned down?
Smoking.
All right, any other discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Christie. Aye. Wayne.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
All right, that passes. The next thing is our sidewalk proposal. Jim is here to answer questions, I kind of went over a proposal last time we were here. And I went ahead and, and I talked with some of the guys, I talked to Danny about a way to, to try to make it cheaper on the city. And he was able to bring it down a handful of cents, but not significantly. And what he would offer to do is, is before we had a twelve hundred dollar a month cost for materials, supplies, that's been taken out because we wouldn't be using his skid steer on a monthly rate.
It was for that, I thought it was for the forms he was paying Danny.
Yeah, no, it was twelve hundred dollars for the forms, the skid steers, all the, the tools, equipment, et cetera. And, and his hourly rate went up to twenty-five, no skid steer, we would be using the one recycling center.
Aye. This is my personal opinion again, very good, that statement. The procedure with which we built Locust Street, I don't want to do that again until I've got assurance that five years from now, somebody doesn't come back and bite me real hard or the city for prevailing wage situation. Because if that happens, we're talking thousands of dollars if we have violated prevailing wages due to the situation where we tried to do this. Second of all, bid it. I'm not so sure that we're, we're not better off bidding it, not bidding it, bid the job.
If, if we bid it, then they have to pay prevailing wage, and we're not going to do it for near the cost, when cities...
The cost is, if the cost is not, the cost's regardless, but if it comes back and we have violated prevailing wage law, it'll look like we, we paid concrete from here to string it back.
And, and doing it...
That's severe with Hickory.
And, and doing it in-house has not violated the rule. As... We're, we're in violation of what was sidewalks last fall. No, I mean, the, I'm not going to speak to the council about this in open session. I mean, I'm happy to discuss it in closed session, but, you know, I've taken this line before. My responsibility is to you all, I owe a legal duty, and I have to advise you all, but I, I'm not going to advise you about legal issues like that in open session, so, okay.
Well, we could, we could look, I mean, there's a bid in here, so many dollars a foot.
No, this isn't a bid per foot, this is an estimate of what it's going to cost.
That's right, it's an estimate. Now, we had an estimate on Locust Street, and we'll re-up the estimate twice. I want re, insofar as I'm concerned, I want Locust Street swept, finished. Dollar cost to the pity event.
I mean, it would just be nice to know how much we have left to work with before we commit, because we're also talking about potentially doing the, the green trail, I mean, we need a budget for these things.
What you, what you would be talking about on these sidewalks would be, I just marked out enough sidewalks, I knew that the legislature, the asset sale tax was supposed to be a hundred thousand. I thought it was maybe ten percent of it. And for Cox's price, his price, is twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. Now, he didn't make a bid or nothing, Jess, but Martha had the tickets, but we charged this hourly wages and the materials and everything. And the other bid was from Mike from Cantrell, and it was thirty-six thousand one hundred twenty-six. Whatever you guys want, if you want more now or later, I don't care.
I still think that we ought to just really sit down here, when, when the Locust Street's done, haul all the bills up, let's add them all up, and let's go on a, on a footage basis. Now, we know it was asphalt, we're not going to have to stand on sidewalks, we don't know about drainage, but let's, let's step back, we want to spend seventy-five thousand dollars out of this fund to do a trail. And I want, we're wanting twelve thousand dollars for a side cutting, we're wanting to go a hundred thousand dollars here, and we haven't talked about the sidewalks, let's come and get everything back into order where we're breathing, get that job paid for, finished, and then let's look and see what it costs to build the next sidewalk. And what we're going to put.
Off the subject, you noticed that in the paper last week, the sidewalk we talked about, north of the school where it did just, they've got a grant that they're cutting it in.
Yeah, that's great, I always, I hope they do, and they stop at the square, just keep going south and go by the cement, go east by the cement hill. But it's our money that we're interested in protecting before we spend anybody else's.
By the way, I wanted to answer your question, I had a moment to step back and think about what I just said. My opinion is no, that the city did not violate any prevailing wage laws last fall, I just want that to be clear to you. But I, I don't want to discuss in detail, but that is, I, I wanted to make that clear to you.
Well, I just wondered about it because in pouring the sidewalks, it would be the same situation over again. Whichever one the guy poured, if they poured, I don't care.
If city employees perform the work, it's not a problem. In other words, if we do what we've always done, it's not a problem. That's right, it's where you start, if you, if you have somebody outside that's not a city employee, you have to pay them prevailing wage. And if you don't, that's where you get crossways.
But really, it seems to be, when it is used to be, employees, when the job is done?
That's, I mean, that's why I don't want to have that discussion, because...
Right, because that's where it gets, where it...
It is, I mean, and so anyway... And keep in mind, this, this is a, a plan to spend thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, not five hundred fifty thousand dollars.
We, we don't, that was my point, this is not a major project, number one. Number two, there's probably nothing that people in City Buffalo notice anymore than they do the increase in sidewalks. And certainly, this can be fluid, and we can bank it off at any time, and if we start heading in that direction, I personally think that we ought to proceed. We've got an employee, they're, they're city employees, the longer they stay city employees, the, the more fortified their position as an employee is. And, you know, you're getting a lot of money for your buck, it's not going to get any cheaper. And this needs to be done, the city or the school is going to be shooting sidewalks along there. And there are just a few areas, and, you know, we're not doing the whole Locust Street project, but we need to build some sidewalks when the weather is permitted. Now, Jess and I are doing this real, and this is, this is just the way I feel about it. And we need to proceed, I think maybe twenty-five dollars is a little bit steep, but in the final analysis, he's going to use some of his forms anyway, because we don't have the form. So you're going to be getting some bonus for that twenty-five dollars, and a whole lot of expertise.
Is that Pan Chief, can you hand both?
Yeah.
Twenty-five plus eight.
I, I would, whichever one of them done it, or if they're doing it now or later, I just did the best I could get. I did try to stay where I thought ten percent of that half-cent sales tax would cover it. And if it happened for three years, then that would pour seventy-five hundred foot of sidewalk. But it can be twenty-five, twenty-six hundred a year, if it's legal, and like I say, if you want to do it now, or if you want to wait, I don't know. Hit them out.
I've, I've got a question, why do we need Chief to pour sidewalks when we've got a guy that pours the sidewalks?
Essentially, it's, it's, it's a function of two things, they're doing two different jobs.
I can't see it.
Okay.
Can't see it, he tears them out himself and cuts them in, I can't see giving him eighteen fifty an hour.
Well, no, Danny wouldn't be the one tearing, no, it'd be Chief tearing, and Danny forming and pouring, that's kind of how the process is formed.
I can't see giving me nineteen fifty.
Okay.
But Cox had a bid, seven thousand dollars cheaper. That's, that's my point.
But, but the difference...
Seven thousand dollars.
And Larry, if you read the proposal, you'd also learn that Cox is going to need Rogers' guys out there tearing out.
But you're still paying these guys, other guys too.
I agree with that.
But, but the point is, it's not a burden on Rogers' department, whereas if Cox does it, it's a burden on Rogers' department, it's... It's kinda six in one, half a dozen in the other. The reason I would prefer Danny doing it is because I've seen Danny's work. I know what Danny can do as far as curbs. We've got a project, I won't say it's unfinished. We have a nice new concession stand bathroom facility next to soccer fields. And I think when we talked about the glory of that, we looked at it as someday we would be asphalting that. We would be putting stripes up. We'd be putting the little curb bumpers up. And with that comes the need to have a slope curve. So if we have a slope curve, I know Danny and the guys on the Locust Street project can do a slope curve. But it's not just there. And this is what I meant to bring up earlier, that I entirely forgot. The school grant, they're gonna do sidewalks around the high school. They didn't account for curving. They're not gonna have a nice curb up there. That might be something that we envision in the grander scheme of Phase Two of the Locust Street project that we might go ahead and add to that project to enhance our city street, enhance Main Street in conjunction with what the school's doing. And that might be something we might consider this summer. Actually, it might be next fall or the following spring because the school's not gonna start digging earth tomorrow, but-
And they all sound like great ideas. The only thing I would say is I would like us to look at the budget, budget for it when we're doing it instead of just saying, yeah, let's do it. Because I can't keep track of everything we've talked about, wanting to take out of the transportation fund. I would just like to do that, do it that way for peace of mind.
Get your bread.
That's fine.
Get your bread.
Well, I mean, we can run numbers at our regular meeting and table this till then.
You can roll on it now.
So when you start tracking everything, we're talking about $444,000, you're gonna be eating up a lot of it.
Yeah, it shrinks down. I mean, I know we're adding to that fund as well, but-
And that's why I just thought 10% of that sales tax would be plenty.
And we'll have to have some cushion in there because if we do get reimbursed monthly for the Greenway Trail, we'll still need to have money to be able to put out. And so, I mean, we have to have money to work with. So I just, I would like to see us budget these things instead of just approving it.
Well, Jess is right. To the extent we don't know for sure what the cost out there, but we've done talk about $75,000.
Yeah, and we have that budgeted already.
We're talking about another $12,500.
But keep in mind though, that the $375,000 reduction to the green space trail, we're not gonna begin to spend that money for six months. Between now and six months from now, the transportation fund will have brought in anywhere between $120,000 to $150,000, which would entirely fund this sidewalk proposal three times, three, four times.
Now, we just, there was a gentleman just here that is trying to make a proposal for what we want to do with our future. And I'm sure that if we agree to do some of that, it'll cost money. And if we don't have it, we can't do these things. I mean, it's, you know, it's nice, and maybe it's not nice to go down to Nixon and say, well, I'm from Buffalo and we've got $500,000 in the bank. Well, it's a hell of a lot better than going to Baltimore and owe $6 million for a swimming pool I can't pay for.
Can't either.
Yeah, so you know, it's being a little conservative with the city's money is not a bad situation.
No, I don't, and that's why I'm proposing something as fundamental as a concrete sidewalk as opposed to a hole in the ground you throw money into, like a swimming pool. Keep it simple, state of the basics, offer the public amenities that we can afford to be proud of without selling our future. And keep in mind, the Missouri State kids talked about having their project and their proposal done by the end of May. So we're looking at four months. In four months between the transportation fund and the capital improvement fund, we're going to be bringing in, I'm not good with math, some days I'm terrible about it, $150,000 to $200,000 in revenue, which is approximately, and again, I'm not good with math, four to five times what we're talking about doing on this sidewalk project. Now, when the transportation fund was brought about in the year 2000, there were promises made by the mayor and the board of aldermen at that time that we're going to do for the city of Buffalo with this. And nothing was done. When I went out and Jess, when you went out and when you went out, Jim, and talked to people about the half cent sales tax for capital improvements, what were they left with the impression of? We're gonna improve our capital. We're gonna do something to clean up the sidewalks, is what I heard. You know, that one.
We're supposed to have a budget meeting on the 31st. Would it be okay, do you think, Jim, if we discussed this and tried to actually put some numbers on paper that we could vote on at the next meeting?
Whatever you decide to do, I ain't gonna, you know, decide.
I wouldn't be much more comfortable with that, just know.
And actually, as far as the two bids here, one man and one machine is the only difference, Kristy.
Yeah.
I mean, whichever one of those boys poured the concrete, poured the sidewalks, they've gotta have one of Rogers' trucks to haul off the old busted concrete. Now, Stevie hasn't got a machine to tear it out. So if Roger can tear it out cheaper than $7,000 for the city, then Cox is the cheapest. But if Roger's needed here in town, you've got a lot of work that needs that machine here. And it's worth more than $7,000, then you need to look at him.
I got two back.
It's that same.
Skid loads.
One man and one machine.
You could find that out from Roger, couldn't you, Larry? If that would be $7,000 plus.
One man, one machine, $7,000 is the difference.
And compare products too. Because I trust Danny.
His sidewalks, Cox's sidewalk will put out. Wait a minute. You mean to tell me you're taking sides on bids because of the work? You're not even bidding the thing.
We're not doing bids.
No, you're not doing bids. But you just said that you preferred one man or another, do not consider him.
I didn't say that at all, Jess. I said I-
Did I misunderstand? Did I misunderstand?
That's what I thought he said too.
I said I prefer Danny because I know Danny can do a slow curve. Are we confused here?
We can table this until the next meeting, would that be okay?
Sure.
We can discuss the budget issues at the budget meeting if you wanna come. That's, I mean, it's on the 31st at 1 o'clock, so it would be helpful.
But Larry, my point is, talk to Danny and see what Danny thinks he can do for the city.
Oh, I talked to Danny and both of them.
And Cox as well.
I talked to both of them.
All right. Make sure when you compare apples to apples, you're comparing apples to apples.
I will.
All right, thank you. Anything else on this?
No, I've said about all I know about it.
All right.
I do have one thing to tell you. I think we're getting a little bit carried away on this budget. You know, we approved the budget. Let's say that Debbie needs a fan for city hall. Are we gonna say where in the budget is there a fan? No. This is a broad-
Dig it up where?
That is where we set our site for the following year. It's not a device that this city council, every time somebody doesn't like something, they come out and they say, it's not in the budget. That's not what a budget is. You know?
It's a guide.
It's a guide.
That's right. But nobody's arguing back there.
But I keep hearing, it's not budgeted, it's not budgeted.
Oh.
And that's not-
After hours, toast, $50.
The purpose of a budget is to provide something to throw in his council's face every time somebody doesn't like a particular monetary account.
I'll just, I'll just charge you.
I happen to be for the sidewalk. I'm not gonna go home mad. I'm not gonna take my ball and say, it's his council, what if he can't do it? You know, it's not that big a deal, that's my opinion. But I don't think we need to sit here and keep worrying about this darn budget.
Was it gonna last then?
It's a minor project. I think the people of City Buffalo love the fact that we're doing sidewalks.
All right, I'll give them-
And I think it's useful. But if the city-
I'm at city council meeting, so you're not gonna call that. I'll send Christopher to go in.
I just don't wanna hear budget, budget, budget.
The only thing I'm saying, Wayne, for $7,000 difference, that's the only thing I want for it.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
The avenue is fine, I don't have a problem with that.
For this amount of cement, that's a lot of money. That's the only thing I'm getting at.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem. If he does, if you're going to wait, whatever you wanna do. And I was just doing the best I could to, like I said, keep it under 10% of that half cent sales tax.
It's that we got a price for the foot.
Well, up there is north of 33.
All I'm saying is, what has been our price to foot for Locust Street? If you take out the asphalt. But if you pour sidewalks, you don't have a salary pension. Are you not gonna have drainage problems? Or are you gonna have to put those things in?
I don't think, we're not gonna deal with drainage on the sidewalks.
No, there shouldn't be any issues. There might be an area where there's a pipe that might have to be replaced. They did a couple up from that here. And guys, when you talk about, and I mentioned comparing apples to apples, the cost per linear foot, 1081 here, and here it's 1326. Look at why it's 1326. Look at why it's 1081. For example, last time when Stevie did it, we had to buy him some wood for his forms.
$166, Andy.
Well, $1184, $499.80 for pipe. I didn't include those in here. Whereas Danny's gonna have-
He'll have pipe too.
Probably, yeah, yeah.
But you know, that's what you say, you've got to compare apples to apples. But when you really get down to it, Andy, there's one man and one machine is what the difference is. And I don't care which one you use for it to even do it. I'm just trying to be honest.
Doctor Roger, he had quite a few guys out there.
I know, I did. And let me say something about that. If either one of them, Cantrell or Stevie, is pouring by the hour. Now, there's some complaints. There's been a little gripe about Rogers' men helping out on Locust. And there was some gripe, a few drives about Rogers' men, too many of them helping Stevie. I didn't tell Stevie. All I said to Stevie, I just said, how many men do you have to have? He said, I need two. But he said, you know, he said, last year, there's times I had four or five. But I said, yes, Roger didn't have that much for him to do. But my point is, whether Cantrell pours it or whether Stevie pours it, if they're both pouring by the hour and Rogers got days that he got the men he don't need, then I think he ought to send them too. Cantrell or Stevie, whichever one's pouring it, because it just speeds it up for the city.
Well, it also teaches a guy a trick.
Am I making sense?
Yeah.
You know? I just wanna be fair. And I ain't sure when you're going to vote, whether I'll even vote on either one of them. Because me and them boys just work together. I like both of them guys. I've worked with both of them. And I done talked to both of them and I told them that over this deal, no one is gonna be mad at me.
How can you, in this case? We've got two highest ranked city employees really responsible to. Under what, under what part of the division of the city council does that fall under? Sidewalks and transportation.
Well, I guess it's that first section that talks about a mayor and what his duties are.
Well, then you've got the same thing with Rogers' department. We've got two men we're paying more money for than I'm paying for people that were right down here in front of beaches, it's morning, digging mud, trying to find water. And you're paying more money. Now, I'm not saying you don't have to have a foreman. But normally, when you have a foreman at the same amount of money, you have lesser labor at a lot less money. And that's what happens to the city. Our city foremans, our chiefs, our department heads make more money than our employees. How do you go out here and hire two people that really just, we just hired them to do basically whatever they want to and pay them that kind of money?
We don't hire them.
How do I keep these guys, how do you keep these guys down in the street department walking off? They're unhappy as you can be, I'll tell you that.
Yes, they are.
Because of the fact that we're paying for two people 1850 an hour and we got these boys down here going to live them. They're not happy.
Well, they didn't apply for that job either. And if they applied for that job, I would've been happy to look at their resume and see if they're qualified to run a $550,000 project. If I've got a Mercedes Benz, I'm gonna take it to a reputable dealer. A reputable dealer, I can work on Mercedes Benz. I'm not gonna take it to my cousin's house who farts around with his old Torino. It's a matter of hiring a person who knows how to do the job sufficiently. And I think we've done that with Locust Street. Now, I know what your hangup is. I know what your hangup is, Larry.
I know, it's 1850, like Jess just said right there, is what I didn't get with it to start with.
Well, and I don't think it's, I think it's the person, not the price.
No, it's 1850.
Well, no, I've heard from both of you, it's the person, not the price. That's not the point. And like Wayne said, we don't need to pull out the budget every time we disagree with something. We don't need to pull out an individual every time we disagree with a project.
They said, Larry, you can do a budget. I'm sure they probably saw that, you don't know what a wreck. Period. Yeah, my vote, I voted against the sidewalk, bring it out. And tell, you can tell me what this what it costs us. And if it doesn't get done till May, it doesn't get done till May. Nobody's gonna die if this thing's not done.
Been like that for 100 years.
And maybe that's the problem. All right, we'll move.
Yes, it is. We're all taxpayers here. We've all lived here a long time, I think.
I know that.
We know what we like for our city.
Okay. How's that working out for you, Jess?
It is not doing a bad job.
All right.
What would you have changed in the last 10 years?
I would've invested the transportation fund in transportation. I would've had these sidewalks, how we'd be repairing them again.
What would you have done about industry and what would you have done about retail markets? And the city's sidewalks are not on the square, they're not bringing retail markets in. If you don't have retail markets in this town, the town is run a die.
Okay.
There's more to building the town than building sidewalks.
All right, and what do you propose to do that, Jess? I'm ready to take notes.
I really don't know. That's the reason I hope that these people come up with what we need. That's the reason we've got that check for it's hand to tell us what we need to do. Because I'm sure not smart enough to do that.
Okay. All right. Next thing is Danny Cantrell's payment. We voted to pay him on a per-ratted basis a day he's out there. But we never voted to kind of check for him. And that's where we're at now. And I've got an invoice here for $54.8460.
We already voted that, don't we, to change the pay?
Well, you know how we have minutes and bills? We have to vote to approve to pay our bills. And we need to, I guess, vote to approve to pay that bill.
Make the vote to make payment.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I'll second it.
Can I ask for clarification?
Uh, yes.
The reason that it got brought up is there's actually a statute that doesn't allow me to sign checks without the board's consent. And that's why most everything comes through the regular board meeting. And before, when he was under that other contract, you guys had made a motion to allow us to pay those. So we just need to know, I understand you're voting to pay them tonight. Are we to continue to pay them every time he presents an invoice? Or are we supposed to do it with the monthly bills? That's what we're looking for clarification for.
I'd say the law is in line with what you're doing.
We've got a commitment to this point to pay Danny to finish the job. Pay him his bills. When Locust Street's done, it's a different deal. We already made that commitment.
And that's, so the motion is to pay Danny his invoices or submit it pursuant to what we previously agreed to do.
Why can't he just submit those and put them in the monthly minutes and bills like every other vendor of the city?
Well, he can, but we haven't gotten the last one done yet.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if the future reference, I mean, just tell Danny to get the invoice in by whatever day of the month. They have to have it and you won't have to worry about it one way or the other.
Well, we do that too. But we got a past due one.
No, I don't.
But for future. Okay. Whatever the motion is.
Goes to the bill.
Okay. And there's a second, I'll call for a vote if there's not any further discussion.
Sorry. Jim.
Yeah.
Wayne.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Aye.
Kristy.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Uh, next thing on our agenda is our storm sirens. Uh, I've had Chief Higgins look into what it would cost to outright replace that and if it can be do, something that can be done in post haste. Chief Higgins, what did you find?
Uh, contacted two companies, uh, two that I could find outside of what we've already done. Um, one company wouldn't give me a price. The other company said they, they come in, put a whole new system in in three weeks for twenty thousand nine fifty. That doesn't include changing the programming for nine one one. And the other guys, I got into them again, third day of last week. He assured me that they would have it here within two weeks.
Is this the new part?
Yeah.
So our, our hands are tied, unless anyone?
Well, people here in two weeks, sounds like, seems like these other people can get it done in two weeks, so.
No, that's the people that'll be here in two weeks. They're the ones that we've been waiting on. Huh?
What about the part?
That's it. The part will be made, manufacturing should be here in two weeks.
Okay. That's where vice are over, right?
That's the one that we've been waiting on, yeah.
And keep in mind, when they say two weeks, that probably means six weeks, but.
No, it better be two weeks after the conversation we had there.
Okay.
I'm not getting ripped anymore.
Fair enough, fair enough. All right, uh, park proposals. Uh, Debbie, I'll let you take the lead on this. Uh, we, we've got some preliminary, uh, discussions with Dominic at the Y about the Y taking over the park programs, including soccer and dodgeball and everything that the city offers as a service to the kids. The Y would, uh, consider taking that over, uh, as they have talked about taking the pool over.
I just wanted some discussion amongst you guys because he's working on getting those proposals together. And I talked to several of you guys, I don't remember if it was in a minute, in a meeting or not, um, and I knew that several of you had said they did, that you didn't want the proposal to include the parks director from the Y. You didn't wanna pay them to take him, and then I think some people do. So I didn't know if there was an expenses among the board, whether, I thought maybe you guys should have a discussion before Dominic.
Well, it's a question of looking at what we're paying now and looking at what we would be paying under that. And then balance the two against any adverse effect.
Personnel has nothing to do with it.
And, uh.
Well, the, the question is, do they wanna take our parks director, and then we subsidize that? Uh, or do we keep our parks director and have him do other things?
And that's a proposal.
But that's after.
We need to see their proposal.
That's not.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what he's working up, and I didn't know if you all, I mean, he was under the understanding, even though it's just a part-time job, that we wanted to pay them to go ahead and take the parks director with that. Because we'll have to take on, you know, maintenance of the park, picking up the trash and cleaning and all that, so. I just wanted to throw it out there, but I can tell him to, to figure it both ways if that's what you want.
Personnel has nothing to do with it. Basically, we're looking to see what, what the best program is for the city park as far as the kids are concerned. I mean, it's not, we're not gonna do it if they don't give the park director, or you have to keep the park director. He's not involved in this situation as far as I'm concerned. It's what you can do for the kids of Buffalo. And what can be the best operation for the city? Is it more feasibility for let the Y run the sports program, or is it better for us? But I think we just have to look, see what they wanna do. No, if it's not a solid commitment, it was asking to look into it.
I think, Debbie, we'll need to see some figures.
Okay, so you, you kinda want it both ways then, is what you're saying, is what you're saying? 'Cause that's what he's doing. He's doing it based on, based on us paying them the loss percentage of, of what the parks lose. I mean, that's, that's pretty much what he's gave us with the Y, and I'm sure that's what he's gonna give you with the park. And so, um, you know, to run the programs doesn't take the full-time parks director. But I think that's where I just, I was, I was confused, I guess.
The, the bottom line is, Bobby, he's gonna work for the city, or is he gonna work for the Y?
So are we here?
Well, but if he works for the Y, they expect you to pay the bills.
You know, if Roger doesn't work for us, Roger's gotta find another job. I mean, it's, it's what the proposal is, it's best for the city. We didn't ask for him to take anybody from the pool when we asked him to do the pool. We asked him to give it, we looked at it. If it was a feasibility study, well, we thought it was best for the city, we took the pool, we give them the pool. It's best for the city, give them the sports, the soccer and the baseball pit, let them have it. Personnel can't be involved in this thing. This is a bottom line, dollar and cents, actually. What you do with Bobby is entirely up to the mayor. Run mail for all I care, but he's not in, he's not in this factor. He's not in his factor.
He recycling director?
So, so we keep Bobby on as, as a city employee, and the, they take over the parks, uh, programs without a director?
We don't know. We don't know, we just follow what they wanna do. I mean, if they want the, if they wanna hire a director, that's their business if they run the pool. If they're running the sports program. We've got a, we've got a parks director that works Thursday running dodgeball. As far as I know, I know he goes down to the cycle plant, he's here, there, and yonder. But he's not, he's not a part of the factor of what we're trying to do. We're trying to have a better sports program for the kids in Buffalo. More feasibility, better operation than we think we've had, and see what it's gonna cost. Doesn't have anything to do with who they're gonna hire or what we're gonna make him ask for. He's not in, he's not, not, he's not in this. This is, if they wanna hire him, if you wanna take him, I mean, if the city wants to keep him on for something else, his job can possibly disappear if it's more, if it's better for the city, for the kids, to have them doing this. Now, that's, and I thought that's what we were trying to do, to leave. Park, department director wasn't in this.
Okay.
I mean, you, I'm, I'm not saying that we don't keep Bobby, but he's not part of what we're trying to, to balance out. His salary will come into what we're looking at because of what we pay a park director, Bobby or somebody else who's been here, he's been gone. I thought that we were trying to run a soccer program for the kids where the city employees up here weren't involved, Debbie and the girls up here. Do a lot of paperwork on that, that takes time from administration to run the program. So I think we're just trying to see which is the best for, for the city and for the kids. It's gotta be for the kids.
Did that answer your question, Debbie?
Yes.
Okay.
If everybody's in agreement with that.
All right, uh, no, no objections, so we'll, we'll, we'll have Dominic calculate it that way. Uh, airport project. Uh, we have an opportunity to get a, a, a grant for resealing the, the runway. It is a hundred thousand dollar, uh, project. We'll have to pay ten percent, so that's gonna cost the city ten thousand dollars for a hundred thousand dollars.
Does, will that be the airport?
Yeah. According to, uh, Mr. Scott.
Please, George.
I mean, ten thousand dollars.
That's what he told me.
It's not very much.
That's what he told me, he been running ten thousand. Probably ten thousand.
Now, was that in the budget?
No.
Ten thousand, I'm sure we gotta tack on to what's gonna come out of that.
Yeah, well, first, ten thousand to come out of the, uh.
Emergency funds. There is, you did not, you didn't see the, you didn't see the emergency funds part of that budget? It's there.
That would come out of the transportation fund. Debbie, how much do we have budgeted for the airport?
Three thousand dollars, I think.
I think we actually did put a little bit of money in there.
I did too, I thought we had five or six thousand dollars.
Budget, I think, or maybe less.
It may have been the ten thousand.
I don't remember if we thought we were gonna, I was thinking we were gonna do this in a couple of years.
I know what you are. You gotta understand, I know what you've been doing to me for fifty years.
That's what I thought of it, is the airport.
It says twenty-five thousand for twenty-two.
So, Wayne, we are within budget.
Kristy.
I, well, I can't do it on command, but if you, if you want, you can turn on that Geico commercial on that little tape, it says, hey! Or in reverse, either one of them will sound the same.
Oh, twenty-five thousand.
I think it is, for sure.
So it's already budgeted?
Okay.
We budgeted, I think we budgeted last year when you came up with the sidewalk grant.
Is, is there a, a motion to approve up to ten thousand dollars in mashing funds? I mean, that's fine, but. Well, we have to apply for the grant first. That's, that's newer, isn't it? Does, does anyone ob, ob, object to me directing him as supposed to apply for that grant? All right, we'll go ahead and apply for it. Uh, if we approve for it, then we'll look to, uh, spend the money to, to do it.
Still power light working all the time down there, can you get in your bedroom light?
Always, yeah, they got it fixed. It's, it, it, it's, it has.
It's working good, too, this way.
Mr. Mayor, can we put on the agenda for next time, checking on, see whether or not we need to lower or raise the air?
Yeah.
I'm going to abstain from that, so you'll need a conference call for this proposal.
Actually, I thought I put it on the agenda from the last, I mean, from the last meeting, so. I, it's on the agenda for the regular meeting.
Kristy, I thought we were supposed to do checking on that.
Thirty-first, on the thirty-first, yeah.
The other thing, uh, you know, the, the city councilman out of Los Angeles makes more than, uh, congress representatives.
They're smarter.
Do, do we need to raise the alderman's bail?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
I would suggest a one and a half percent increase.
I'm not good with math at that.
It'd be a thirty-three cents.
Thirty-three.
Remember that, Kristy, remember that, Kristy.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, we have a motion on the board to, all right, it's turning discussion. All right, all those in favor, will you adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.